Council meeting. Just first off, Mary Loue Powers is filling under the weather today, so I'll be taking her place. And would you please give us a little call, please?
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Jane? Here. Campia?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Okay, would you all please stand and join me in silent prayer, and then we are gonna hear a flag salute by Boy Scout Troop 119, who is celebrating their 50th year this year.
Code yard, forward march. Code yard, prepare to go to the hill. Please join me in another video, you can put your right hand over here, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united, in physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Code yard, move to the hill. Two. Code yard, perform. Code yard, present. Thank you.
That was very good, thank you. Okay, uh... Liz, you wanna read the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.c.i.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a secret identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone and address the council and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, do we have any agenda approval additions and or deletions? Uh, I have... I have one, I would like to call, uh... K-1, Youth Committee vacancy. And this I'd like to put off to our next meeting if we could, please. I haven't had a chance to speak to the applicants, and I'd like to speak with them myself. If that's acceptable to all council?
I'm fine with it.
We need to vote on doing... You know, okay, okay. Okay. And we have presentations tonight, so we have, uh, Spon's recognition and, uh...
Okay. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Lauren, Melissa, Rick, Sharon, and Jim Spon for coming out in this, uh, April Fools weather.
So it was just a joke we called you here?
No. Tonight, the Shop Local Committee, along with the City of Galt, would like to honor Spon's cookies and the owners. And Shop Local tries to encourage citizens of Galt to be loyal to their local merchants. But we also want to recognize the businesses that have been loyal to the city and the citizens of Galt. They've stayed in Galt through the good times and the bad times and always improved it and been a big part of the community. So, let's take a look at Spon through the years.
Do you have the video?
We do.
Somebody?
We do. PowerPoint.
We just do it. Whatever comes up.
Yep, we'll go from there.
The PowerPoint.
She knows. There it is.
There it is.
Cool.
We're fine. Maybe we'll sit down.
Actually, can we, like, turn off some of the lights?
There we go.
And Jim? Would you be interested in sharing some of your stories about the transformation of...
But the thing is, we'd have to have... Well, in order to have you on record, we have a microphone we can give you. That would help us.
This was, uh, this was the construction of the old Galt Post Office on the corner of C Street and Fifth. And we... That's where the tower is today with the clock. So, we were just in construction phase at that time. It would've been probably around, about ninety-two, maybe?
Wow.
1992? There you go. All of the... All of the bricks you'll see on these... This building and some of the others are... It was the original brick that came out of the hotel on Fourth Street, the buildings on Fourth Street that burned down. Part of them burned down, and then, uh, Mr. Listini, it was too costly to rebuild it, so he had them torn down, and we bought a bunch of the brick, and that's what we restored. All of our... All of our buildings that you see that are bricked are all from the original site on Fourth Street.
Well, that's what you call recycling.
Yes.
Great, that's great.
I don't know if that's beyond the latter or who it is, but a couple of workers. Now, this building was, uh, the original building that we moved into when my dad moved to Galt in 1958. And of course, it didn't look like that, but it was, uh, um... It was a thirty by sixty building, and then there was nothing on the other side of it that you see, the brick building. There was nothing there. It was a vacant lot, and then there was another vacant lot by the post office. The post office was actually half that size, so there was two lots in there when we moved here, uh, in 1958. Wow, that's an ugly thing. That's the, uh... That's our present cookie plant, looking from probably the railroad property on Fourth Street. It was a tilt-up building, and it took us a little longer to restore that than what we thought it was, uh... Uh, it was... It was quite a feat, and my son-in-law, Lauren, kinda took charge of it and got it done this last year. So, it's, uh, changed a little bit now. That's the same... Same with, uh... You can't see it too well, but it's, uh, it's got the trees and everything front and... Yeah.
Wow.
Haven't seen that in a long time. That was what, uh... That was the... It was called the 417 Bar, Club, 417 Club, I guess it was, uh... That was right across the street from us, but it... It actually had a kind of a western siding on, and when we decided to restore that, that's what we found underneath. And now it's, um... Now it's the doctor's office in town, the physician's office there. Uh, and once again, when we restored it, we restored it with all the original brick, so that brick is also from Fourth Street. That's what it looks like today.
Big difference.
Wow.
And if you... If you get a chance to look at it, it was actually, especially on the side, on the side with the, uh... The vacant lot there, look at the brick, because we were running on a brick. And so, we had actually put the best brick in our store across the street on those buildings. But it's got so much character. They were... They've been in fires, and they're... They're different sizes, and so the guy that put the brick in had a... Had a time in getting everything to match, but it turned out it had a lot more personality in the brick itself. That was, uh... Originally, when we moved to Galt, that was the bus garage. I think it was for the high school, and the... All the high school buses would be parked inside there, and there was some gas pumps out in front, no sidewalks at that time. And today, it's, uh... We're renting part of it to Edward Jones, uh... Their offices in front, and then we have some storage in back for some of our equipment.
Well, the business roots all the way back to eighteen hundreds, it's right here in our own bathroom.
This is Spon's today, cookie stars.
Hey, good morning, guys. Okay, so I totally grew up eating these cookies. These are the, uh, the Spiced Windmill Cookies. So, okay, so that's the... That's the box, but that's the cookie itself. And 'cause I used to try to eat, you know, like, the blades of the windmill first, and then I would go down to the bricks and try to eat those. And I would always take the whole, last, I don't know why, you know? Just a kid, that's what we did. Love that stuff. And then, yes, they're made right here in Galt, so swing over here, because this is Mr. Jim Spon. He is the, uh... Let's see, you are the grandfather, so you're the third generation Spon.
Yeah, I am.
Well, you've got all these fantastic pictures up here that tell a little bit of the story behind Spon's, but it started back in Michigan, right?
It actually started in Holland.
In Holland, that's right.
Eighteen ninety-six, my grandfather there, he, uh... He started his bakery there, and then he came to American in nineteen oh five. He flew Ellis Island and became a baker in America and settled in Michigan. And then, my father and my... My mom started another bakery, and my dad started with his brother, and that's where the Spon's Brothers comes from.
Wow.
Spon's Brother Bakery, and that was during World War II.
And then that pan there, you guys actually... Or actually, someone actually found that, you said, at a dump?
Found that pan in the town dump in Meskegon, Michigan. A friend of mine that was going to American River College went back there, and he was going into the dump area, and he found that pan laying there, so he brought it back to me.
It's so funny. Okay, now, take a look at this, uh... This Model T, just one more time, just so you can kinda get a look at it, 'cause you're gonna need that as a point of reference in just one minute. But before we show you that, this picture that's behind the case over here, I love it, 'cause that's... That is a little young Jim. Jim, how old were you in that picture?
Uh, I was born in nineteen forty-two, so I would've been two years old.
Oh, little guy.
And I'm actually eating a donut. Dad had a con... That's my father in the background and my sister on the right there, and, uh, Dad had a contract to do baked goods for the commissary in Meskegon, Michigan, where they made Continental Engines during World War II. And that's what we were doing that day.
Now, we're inside the store right now. This is where you can get, uh, you know, all kinds of Spon's cookies and meringues and all kinds of fun stuff. But let's take a look over here, Jim, uh, where you've got the Model T back here. Now, you actually had that built piece by piece, right?
We actually built that in our... In our shop. We found all the pieces here in Galt, and we tore them all down and sandblasted them and painted them, and we got the chassis ready to, uh, actually runnable, and then we sent it to a man, and to Larry, who did the woodwork, who had the original plans from the factory, from the Ford factory.
So, that's a remake of the delivery truck that your grandfather had.
Yes, it is, it's... But it's all made with original parts. In fact, the engine, transmission were still working in Galt as a... A guy was, uh, using them as a saw out of the ranch, so...
I love it. All right, well, stick around, 'cause coming up in the next hour, we're gonna go next door to the actual cookie factory, where they're making, uh, some cookies for us this morning. And, uh, just so that you know, Mr. Jim Spon, the reason he went to college was so that he wouldn't have to work in a bakery. You can find Spon's Cookie Company at 456 C Street in Galt, phone number there, 209-745-1974.
Okay, um... You know, I remember watching you build that clock tower and thinking, "What a crazy person to build such a really beautiful thing in Old Town Galt," because at that time, it didn't look very good. But then, when you got through, I thought, "You know what? This could really be something." So, I decided to open the Old Town Gift Shop on the corner. But I wouldn't have done it, probably wouldn't be up here if it wasn't for that, uh, if you hadn't started things rolling. And I'd like to ask our city manager to weigh in on what he thinks Spon's has done to revitalize Galt, Old Town Galt.
Sure. Well, I think, like you said, really, is the catalyst for getting everything started down there. I think the city and the community owes a lot to Spon's, only because of the company they are, and the jobs, the people that are employed there, but the improvements to Old Town. You saw some of the before and after pictures, and, uh, you know, I started in two thousand and six, and that project was already long before finished, but when you drove through Old Town, that was the one part that really caught your eye. You thought, "This is something," and it kinda gives you a vision of what Old Town could become with a little bit of extra work in some of the other building. I think it's what... If it weren't for what Spon's did previously, I don't think we would've restored Roosters. I don't think we'd see Galt Place there today. I don't think we would've seen all the progress we've made. And so, I think the city and the community owe a lot to the Spon's family, the things that they've put into this community, the investments they've made here, and so, we really are appreciate their commitment to our city and their, um... The progress they've made in helping us to restore and revitalize our Old Town.
Uh, Mark, you're on the Shop Local Committee. Do you wanna weigh in on this?
Well, I kinda have double weighing here. I'm also Shop Local, but I'm also, as a retired police officer, very thankful that you did away with the 417. That was a nightmare, but, um... What you've done with that whole area is just phenomenal, and I thank you very, very much for it. I'm hoping that once we get past the issues of the state, we can continue that and make that whole downtown area as beautiful as you've created it.
Um, we have something for you, and... Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Did you have anything, Campia?
No, nothing really, except that it was... It was a pleasure working with you, Jim, uh, through all those projects. Uh, I know we spent a lot of time together, uh, in the office, and we always didn't have good news for you, but you persevered anyway, and, uh, the finished product is great, and, uh, very happy for you and your family, and very happy for the community, and thank you.
And I would just like to say, I appreciate... I love history, and I so appreciate you bringing Spon's Cookies here, so you bring in history here, and you preserved it here. Uh, it's so great to look at those pictures, and it's nice to hear somebody be able to narrate it and explain to us who was who, and, you know, I was that two-year-old boy and stuff. So, I just can't thank you enough for what you've done for our community and keeping this... Keeping that history here.
Thank you very much. Just one... One quick word.
Yes, sir.
I won't say much here.
That's what I tried to tell him.
My father, fifty-six years ago in April, said to us, as I was a sixteen-year-old, like, going up to high school, "We're going to move to a little town called Galt." And it was probably the worst day of my life. We all wanted to run away from home, and, uh... And... But we did move here, and it's the best thing that ever happened to us. I mean, in this town, um, is where I met my future wife at Methodist Church and in high school, and our kids all went to Galt High School here and graduated, and our business has flourished here, and we love this town. And at that time, it was a low point in our life, and it turned out that probably the best thing that ever happened to us. So, thank you for the... For the honor tonight.
Well, we can't thank you enough. Thank you, sir.
Okay. That's okay. Um, at this time, we have something for you, and if our city clerk would read the proclamation, and the Vice Mayor, and our Shop Local, Anne, and Winona, if you would meet them at the podium, you may wanna say a few things. Yeah? Head on down. Head on down there, and take that with you.
You don't need to read it?
Yeah, read that. Go ahead and read it.
So, a proclamation recognizing Spon's Cookie Company for their many years of service and contributions to the City of Galt. Whereas, Spon's Cookie Company was founded in nineteen twenty-two by Peter Spon, who moved to America from Holland and opened a cookie company in Michigan. And whereas, the store was passed down through the generations, and in nineteen fifty-eight, Peter's son, William, moved to California and opened the bakery in Galt. And whereas, in the following decades, all six of William's children worked in the bakery, including Jim Spon. And whereas, under Jim's direction, the Spon's Cookie Company has been proactive in upgrading their bakery building, leading the way for Old Town Galt revitalization. And whereas, Spon's Cookie Company has served the community of Galt well and is dedicated to making their community a better place. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Galt, California, does hereby recognize Spon's Cookie Company for their outstanding service to the Galt community, be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Galt wishes to thank Spon's Cookie Company for making a positive difference to the citizens of Galt.
Anne, did you and Winona wanna say something from the Shop Local Committee, since it came out in this cold weather?
I would just like to give my appreciation, because we could not do a lot of events, but one in particular is our Christmas celebration that we do at the lighting of the... Of the night. Um, Spon's generously donates their... Our cookies for our cookie decorating every year, and again, would not be... Not be the same without that. And then, strawberry Tutti, as far as the chamber goes, they're always, um, a huge part of that, and making our strawberry shortcakes. So, again, appreciate all that you guys do. Thank you.
Winona?
I wanted to thank you for having your shop here, because every time I have people coming in from town, the first place I take them is to the Spon's Cookie Factory. And, uh, I've got relatives from back east and from Alaska, some of the places that I have brought to your shop there. And I... I always talk to the cashier and tell them where my relatives or friends are from. So, um, I'm really glad that you guys are here, so I have someplace to take people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, folks. And next presentation we have come up is Galt Police Department SWAT function, and that would be, looks like Lieutenant Kalanowski. I guess that, 'cause you were walking up this way.
Yes, sir, thank you. And I think it's a setup that I'm following Spon's.
I think you're right.
I just wanna know if I got a picture and a proclamation and everything that I'm doing, so... Thank you for having me this evening. And I'm here to talk about, uh, one of the many functions that the Galt Police Department engages in in order to keep the community safe. And one of those programs is our SWAT program. Currently, that program is run by, um, the Elk Grove Police Department with participation from members of the Galt Police Department. And SWAT, for folks who don't know, stands for Special Weapons and Tactics. So, the first slide that you should see, if the pictures came up. There you go. N W three, so... Three, four, there you go. So, those three pictures represent, um, a picture of the University of Texas at Austin. And on August first, nineteen sixty-six, Charles Whitman, who's a sniper, suspect sniper, um, killed fifteen people and injured thirty-one others, um, from a position on the twenty-eighth floor of that facility. And, um, the resolution of that event actually was a quasi-dynamic response from officers who made their way to the twenty-eighth floor and were able to actually, um, subdue the suspect by, um, lethal force. So, with that occurring, and issues that occurred in Los Angeles, and you can switch, and that's a rendition of the Texas Tower incident, you can go to the next slide. So, although created in Philadelphia, the Los Angeles Police Department is credited with creating the first SWAT, hence in the sixties. Uh, nineteen sixty-five loss riots, as many of us know about, is along with the sniper attack that occurred at the University of Tex... Texas in Austin a year later, drove home the feeling that, um, police needed to be better equipped to respond to issues that occur in their communities. And there was some resistance to obviously having some sort of a military-type approach, a more dynamic approach to police services in individual communities. But LA was successful in, um, starting and deploying the first SWAT teams, and it came home, uh, in a positive way in a barricaded standoff that occurred in nineteen sixty-nine. From then, um, LAPD's ability to successfully have their SWAT team, uh, went throughout the country with other SWAT teams, um, being formed. Now, initially, a lot of these SWAT teams were city-specific, like here in the City of Galt. Back in the late eighties, early nineties, Galt had their own SWAT team, uh, staffed by members of the Galt Police Department. That team was five members strong, and then as the city became a little bigger, it was seven members. Um, but that no longer is the case, as I indicated before, and it's now a joint team between the Elk Grove Police Department... Who would you like me to push? Forward. All right, very good. All right, so, um... So, the general team duties with the SWAT team are narcotics, says raised, but narcotic search warrant services, high-risk warrant services, apprehension of barricaded subjects, the safe recovery in hostage situations and other hazardous situations that can occur, active shooter incidents, not so much initially, because active shooter incidents obviously are handled a little bit differently based on Columbine and other incidents that have occurred. We don't wait for the SWAT team like had initially been done, but the SWAT team would have, obviously, an active, uh, participation in those incidents. Uh, containment, intelligence, and negotiations, really what that means for the SWAT team is slow it down. Um, a lot of police events move quickly, but when it gets to a point where SWAT's involved, everything really... We slow it all the way down as slow as we can, um, to ensure the safety of the people involved and to make sure that decisions are made, uh, in the best interest of the totality of what we're faced with. We also provide, or the team provides, technical support to other teams, and this manifests itself in situations like the animal control officer, losses of life here in Galt. That was an incident that had multiple SWAT teams involved due to the length of the SWAT team assignment. And then, we do things like the IT protection and security of high-profile events. Okay? See, I can multitask. Chief didn't believe so, but I just proved myself. Um, all the officers assigned to the SWAT function is a collateral duty to their regularly assigned functions that they hold within their respective police departments, either in Elk Grove or here in Galt. So, more often than not, it's patrol officers who are also SWAT team members, um, sometimes detectives. Here in the City of Galt, we currently assign two members of the Galt Police Department to the Elk Grove team. And, um, they train primarily in entry tactics, but then they have secondary duties on that SWAT team for marksmanship, which is a sniper, um, position, of less-lethal weapons operator, chemical agent specialist, tactical field medicine, or medic, specialized equipment operator, and then there's the negotiation team that I talked about. Qualifications, these are qualifications that are outlined by Elk Grove since we joined their program. They require at least two years of law enforcement experience and off-probation, so if it was a lateral officer that came from another organization to this organization, they would at least need to get through their eighteen-month probationary period, irrespective of how much experience they had in other organizations. But a minimum of two years. There's, uh, physical testing that occurs, and how that... How that occurs is, once they have a select number of openings, Elk Grove will run a test by getting letters of interest from members of both organizations. They have an oral review board that occurs, the physical agility that I spoke of. They do a job performance analysis, looking at, um, uh, different things, mostly evaluations and frontline supervisors' recommendations. And then, they select the top candidates, and only the top candidates are selected. If they don't have the candidates, or they don't feel like they have the candidates that they need to select, they'll run another test. It's a position that cannot be compromised in the selection of the people that are assigned to that program. Currently, the tactical portion of the combined team is seventeen members. There are some openings on that team. Lieutenant Pilcher from the Elk Grove Police Department runs that team. For all, I liaison with Lieutenant Pilcher on any issues that involve our staff. They have a team leader, Sergeant... Team leader, excuse me, Sergeant Press, two assistant team leaders, and then the hostage negotiation team that I spoke of. Currently, they have six negotiators with some openings and two tactical dispatchers. Our area responsibility, as you can imagine, is Elk Grove and Galt, but we can be called to provide service to any other location. In fact, we still have one remaining employee here in the City of Galt who's on the original SWAT team that Sergeant Dietrich's in. And, um, that team, when it was a five-member team, actually went down to the Rodney King riots in Los Angeles. So, you can get pulled, you know, to various locations throughout the state. So you can get pulled, you know, to various locations throughout the state based on need. Training, it's training, training and more training, as you can imagine. The tactical team trains twice a month for a 10-hour day. Then they do a weekly exercise once a year. And the hostage negotiation team currently is doing one day a month, and then they participate in the week-long training once a year with the entire team. Both those programs, the negotiators and the tactical team, it's important that they train in some environment on a regular basis because one relies on the other. Being a former negotiator, I always said the negotiators were the brains behind the operation, only because I wasn't the guy laying in the weeds at 3:00 in the morning when it was raining, right? So anyways, but everybody has a vital role and it plays a very important component in the success of the operation. And then here's some pictures of recent training exercises that have occurred. In addition to the training that occurs monthly, all SWAT team, whether you're a hostage negotiator, you'll go to a hostage negotiation 40-hour course. And if you're a tactical team operator, you'll go to a basic 80-hour course for baseline certification. And then there's additional close-quarter combat and other training that occurs with the tactical team and the hostage negotiators as they spend more time in the program. So there's some recent photos of trainings. I did not have a video like Spons, so I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Lieutenant, where's that training done at?
It's done between Elk Grove and Galt. They've done it here locally and we've done it up in Elk Grove.
Okay, so they have isolated areas where they do all this?
Yes, and they will also use, as you know, we have a range out at the treatment plant that they will use for some, some of their shooting range exercises that they do. And again, some more pictures here of folks doing different trainings and different deployments. The one off the side of the van, you know, that's a quick entry into a, into a, you know, a pretend scene, at least in that situation. In 2013, the combined team had a total of 18 operations. There were 11 that occurred in the city of Elk Grove, seven in the city of Galt, and then in addition, we had, they deployed for the security of Officer Ton's funeral. So for a community, it kind of gave us a hard time sometimes because they would not be able to justify their existence if we didn't use them as often as we did. But clearly, you see that there is a need for, in both jurisdictions, a need for the team, and it resulted in, you know, operations 18 times during the year of 2013. Some of those can be high-risk, again, like I talked about, high-risk search warrants, drug warrants, fugitive apprehension, barricaded subjects and other things. And so those, that's what occurred in 2013. What does the future look like? We want to continue to expand our involvement here in the city of Galt with members of the city of Galt participating. Elk Grove, who I consider to be, Elk Grove Police Department, a stand-up organization, has been very willing to allow our participation and it made our members feel very at home in their team. We recently conducted interviews, and we are going to select and announce here by next week two hostage negotiators that we're going to assign to that team. So in addition to the two tactical operators, we'll have two hostage negotiators. And then, as you know, as is noted on the slide, we're looking to place a tactical dispatcher on that SWAT team program. And some of this has to do with staffing and other things, and so with dispatch, trying to get the staffing back up and everybody trained, and then we'll move that direction. And then that's the last photograph. And are there any questions or comments that anybody might have?
No?
Good, thank you.
Very good. Well, I just, I got to tell you, I, as we know here, you just never know when and where it's going to happen. So I think this training is vital in any city. And I certainly appreciate you and our police officer service and duty to our, our community. I appreciate it. Please, Winona, say thank you.
Yeah, we will pass that along. As you know, we have our awards banquet on Friday evening. And one thing I wanted to talk about, somebody might ask, well, so why is there a combined team? That is the trend of the future in, in law enforcement with SWAT team operation. The state has identified where post, our police officer standard in training, has identified a baseline training requirement for all SWAT teams so they operate, you know, in conjunction or similar to each other. And a lot of local jurisdictions have found that possible. And so there's Pismo and Grover Beach, and those locations actually have the seven jurisdiction combined SWAT teams, because there's a lot of smaller agencies down there, but they all have the ability to get some collateral training and address issues that occur in all those jurisdictions and have some teamwork, which is important with our limited resources. So unless you're a really, really big community, like, you know, 100,000 or something like that, you know, like in Elk Grove, having a standalone SWAT team operation really doesn't make sense from a financial standpoint. I'm sure that's one of the reasons why, as history shows, we combined with Elk Grove. I think it was good enough.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Lieutenant.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment list, if you want to read that, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Jean Davenport. And while he's coming up, we're having a little technical difficulties with this timer, so I will give you a 15 to 30-second warning.
Since there's going to be two of us, can we have like a little more than three minutes?
Yeah, you can each have three minutes.
Okay, so if we got four, do we get 12?
No.
I want to thank you for, thank you. I'm Jean Davenport, I live in City of Galt, and it's wonderful to see the Spons here. It's really great. I've only been in Galt for about 10 years, and it's one of the first things I learned about was Spons cookies. So those oatmeal cookies are the bomb. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sunrise Rotary, and I want Winona to please to come on. And we wanted to just take time to address you folks and thank you for the participation of the city and other elected officials for their partnership in our community dinner. I want Winona to tell you a little bit about how this dinner went, and I'll kind of pick up after that.
Actually, this year, it went wonderful. Our, our participation, I think it went up to about 400 people. Or in the, we started it four years ago, and it was like 250 or 300. And most of them, we always had it at the Littleton Center, too, and most of it was takeout orders. We found people that were shut-ins and couldn't get out, and so we made a meal for them and we delivered it to them. And so we have been able to do this by donations. Like this last year, we had the Waste Management, he donated, and we had, oh goodness, it just Save Mart, we got bread from them, and which, that was a lifesaver. And Food for Less, we got some pretty good deals from them. And, oh yeah, the Real Men's Club, they would never forgive me. They wouldn't do that. So they were a big contributor. Every year, they have helped us, so they have really helped us. And I can't remember anybody else, I'm sorry.
I'll pick up. I wanted to point out that the Real Men's Club joined us this year with a financial donation. And what's even good about that is because as it starts to grow, because this community event is going to get bigger. The Rotary is going to be committed to this in the future, and I could see us reaching 800 to 1,000 people shortly. Two years ago, when I came on board, like she said, a lot of them were to-go donors. We only had a few people show up. But one of the highlights was Senator Galziani and Dave Akaresa from California Ways and Systems came out, and they participated in this. And Dave gave us a financial donation, and he also made sure that he wanted to be a part of the volunteer group that showed up. Kathleen came out, she served people. It was the highlight of the event, I think, you know, very few people showed up, but the fact that we got people to come and be interested in that. And from that, it kind of like gave us the idea to invite all the area representatives to come and help serve their constituents at a holiday, as a holiday meal. And the people that showed up, it was, I think it was an emotional thing for them because they saw the people, they came in, people from Galt that didn't know each other, met for the first time at this community event. And that's why I think it's going to be so good in the future, because it's going to get bigger. The people from Parks and Recreation, they gave their time to come and help us when we have issues with electricity or opening up the ice box. I mean, sometimes, we ask, we ask a lot, and I know that. And sometimes we're more of a pain in the butt, but we're a good thing, because at the end of the day, this is for the community. And this was really, really a genuine event, and I'm so proud of everybody that participated. So I asked tonight that Mary Lou and Mike, you guys come on down, because we've got a little token of appreciation.
Barbara.
Barbara, Mary Lou's not here. So we'll give it to Liz, and you can give it to Mary Lou. Barbara and Mike, come on down. Senator Galziani is here tonight, I asked her to come by. And Dave Akaresa, California Ways, come by. I asked Don Matoli, and he had to cancel at the last minute. So we just got a little token of our appreciation for your participation in this event. So can you guys, can you guys come over here in the center? Can you take a picture, Alan? You can either fly you in. Now, what we're going to give you tonight is just really a small token of our appreciation, but we want you to realize what it is. What this is, is your uniform for future events. I don't know if we're going to get this one a mic or not. I don't think it is. I want to get a picture of you guys, along with, I want to get one, too. You guys get in there. You know, the nice feeling thing, I'm telling you. Nice feeling, though. One more out. So, I mean, at this time, I'll turn it over to anybody who wants to say anything, but I want to thank you guys for showing up. And I mean it from the bottom of my heart, this is such a good community event, and it wouldn't really have been successful without your participation, so I appreciate that.
If I could just take a moment, also, I'm really grateful and, and you're so appreciative for just a little bit of time that I spent. And in comparison, the Galt Rotary members and all of you spent so much more time than I ever would. But it's really amazing, the outpouring of community support from the Galt community to make sure that everyone in the community was able to celebrate Christmas together. And I look forward to working with you and partnering with you, and if perhaps my office can provide assistance with helping people sign up for healthcare or emergency assistance with paying electrical bills or whatever that might be next year and in the future, I offer those services and would be happy to participate with you. And if I could, for one just moment, give you some information also about some emergency drought legislation that was just passed this last month. Senate Bill 103 and 104 provide $680 million for emergency relief projects. And while we look forward to a bond measure on the November ballot, and while Congress continues to debate issues with regards to funding for water storage and whether to waive environmental clearances and so forth, we know that the drought is happening now. And so while these long-term conversations are important, the clock is ticking, and we need to take state action and partner with our local government partners to address the needs now. So once again, SB 103 and 104 that were passed provide emergency funding for local water recycle projects and stormwater capture projects. So if that's something that you're interested in, please let me know. But again, I'm here to celebrate the success of your Christmas event and thanks the Galt Rotary and all, and Dave Akaresa and all of the others who participated to make it a success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Galziani, thank you so much for taking such a great interest in our community. And Mr. Akaresa, thank you so much for your support in, in all that you do here, and people know you do a lot for this community. Thank you. Anybody else, anything else? Any other speakers, sir? Okay. Okay, let's go to the information and consent calendar. Liz, can you read that out, please?
We have four items tonight. The first, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of March 18th, 2014. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, purchasing policy revision, increased purchase order threshold. And number four, approval of the proclamation recognizing Spons.
Okay. Motion?
It's a move.
Second. Okay. Moved by Mr. Canton, and seconded by Mr. Cruz. You take the roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Regular consent calendar, how you done scheduled matters.
Steve.
Somebody's talking to you. Strategic plan. We do strategic planning that takes us all day, about every six months or so. This is for the future of the community and our, the world we live in here in Galt. So we'll just go over this real quick. And do you need to go do something? I can do this if you need to go do that. I'll do this.
We can do that if you'd prefer, if I'm not sure.
The first thing we have here is enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities. And the people in touch, or in charge of that part of them is a council member, and this one happens to be Ms. Barbara Payne. Do you want to read that out?
Sure. The watch is developed and presented to the city council for action, a plan for approved Harvey Park. And the visibility of the surrounding area includes park facilities, code enforcement, crime prevention, and the cost. Actually, since the last time we reported, we reported on the block party at Harvey Park, which was very successful, and it gave the police officers an opportunity to build relationships in the neighborhood, which is one of the goals. Did you want to add something? I see you, okay. Since then, I have talked to Estrelita, the high school, and Brandon Moore is going to check into taking on the design of the possible community garden in the area. I think that's all. Oh, I will be reporting to the Parks and Rec Commission and about our plans for the community park and getting their approval, hopefully, that we do a temporary community garden until such time as we have the funds to put in the bigger and larger top lots.
We're still waiting to hear on the grant application. Chris, I don't know if there's any update on that yet. We're probably still a few months away before we hear anything officially.
That's correct. We're still looking at June for decision on the grant.
Okay. Let's move on to enhance economic development. And that would be our Community Development Director, and since he is freshly new here, I'm not gonna call on him. I think we can have Mr. Bearman read into that.
Yeah, actually, I think Chris is prepared to.
Oh, it's Chris? Oh, nobody told me that.
That's all right.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris Saris, and you're planning with the city's Community Development Department. The what in this section is conducting Eastview Annexation and Specific Plan Project Scoping Meeting with the applicant and the community. As you all know, the Eastview application is the annexation of 500, roughly 500 acres east of the city limits, with a potential of up to 1,400 homes. And a key milestone in that process is the scoping meeting for the environmental document. We're a little bit behind schedule. We actually have the draft document ready to go, but we're still fine tuning some aspects of the application itself, and also the scoping meeting. But at this point, we're looking to be on target for the end of the month. So, we're a little bit behind, but we're getting it.
Okay. And next, we have improve financial stability. And that would be Special Projects Administrator. I don't see that he's here, but I do see Monica here.
The what is evaluate the feasibility of acceptance of EBT cards at the Galt Market and make a recommendation to the city council for action. Armando, Felician, Kimberly, Paulson had a conference call with Diane Padilla Bates and Joy School Event from the California Department of Social Services to get clarification on what needs to be done, to get the Galt Market authorized to participate in the National Supplemental Nutrition Acceptance Program, or SNAP, which is funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Foods, and Nutrition Services. Diane Padilla Bates is the Farmers Market Specialist in the DSS, and helps farmers markets set up their programs once they are approved by the USDA. A point they wanted me to stress was approval for this program is not guaranteed. Ms. Padilla Bates will be contacting the USDA to gather more information regarding whether there is a specific percentage of growers that need to be participating in the Galt Market in order for it to be accepted into the program. Armando and Kimberly explained that the Galt Market, though through special alleged explanation, is the only market in California to be owned and operated by a city, and that the funds from the market are used to operate the Parks and Recreation Department. Staff has asked Ms. Padilla Bates if the city can work with a nonprofit to run the program on the market ground. This would help to limit such costs as the initial setup, as well as the ongoing operation and labor costs associated with administering and marketing the program. Ms. Padilla Bates feels that this would be a good match for the Galt Market, and we're waiting to hear back from her.
Okay. You have comment?
I do. I just wanted to comment on that, that I think it's so important that this happen, if we can make it happen. Because who needs fresh fruit and vegetables more than the low-income families? And to think that they couldn't use their food stamps on fresh foods and vegetables at the flea market, just doesn't make any sense to me, because they need that. So I sure hope that through your efforts, that this gets approved.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment, question? Okay, next, we have attract, develop, and retain quality employees. And thank you, Monica, for that. And Chris, thank you. Our HR Administrator, Ms. Kewry, is that correct? You? You're the Administrator, aren't you, HR? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I bet Paul's over there going, "What? When did that, when did my job title change?" But you were gonna talk. I thought you were gonna make a fool of yourself. Mrs. Love, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
Not a lot to update. I have been working on the survey for our employees that I just met with the city manager on Thursday of last week, and kind of developing questions. We're all set up a Survey Monkey once we've defined which questions we are going to be giving to our employees that will, that will go out, you know, within a short period of time.
And that's on target?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have enhance cultural and youth activities. That would be Ms. Powers and Police Chief, working with the city attorney and city clerk with input from the community. Who's gonna do this one?
I'm gonna do this one.
Okay.
Our goal is to identify the needs and define the parameters of the Community Culture Advisory Committee, and recommend to the city council for action. We were due to come in here tonight to, in fact, do that, and unfortunately, we're behind. We had some problems as far as getting some meetings together with the people involved in this. We actually have a meeting scheduled for the third day after tomorrow, and hopefully we'll be on time as far as for our newest date, as far as being April 15th, we'll be bringing something back to council.
Okay, Chief, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry.
No, no, that's what I'm reporting.
Actually, I met with the mayor in her home, in her sick bed, the other day, and reported to her that our two high schools, Liberty Ranch and Galt High School Art Department, will be kicking off their appeal to get support with a storefront art show at Lincoln Way and C Street. And it'll, they'll start their display about April the 8th. It'll be there through May the 2nd, and there will be a reception open to the public to see all the wonderful artwork that our students do on the 12th. So that's gonna be kicking off your arts and cultural thing, and Mayor Powers is excited, and she will be there, hopefully, to cut the ribbon and oversee that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Payne. Before we move on, I just wanna welcome a new member here, that it's the first time this meeting here, and nobody knows I was gonna do this. We have our NASCAR race driver here, Mr. Tony Stewart. Now, this is our new, this is our new director. Did you wanna say hello or anything? Come on, just say hello. I double dogged her here.
Thank you, and it is a pleasure to be here for the city of Galt. Like I mentioned earlier, just quite a few of you have been, you know, visitor of the area for years, and definitely very excited to be here to relocate from the LA area, and to come up here and hopefully help the city grow in the right direction. Thanks for all for having me.
Well, welcome. And I'm sure there are people out there going, "Who's that guy?" So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew who he was. Okay, any other questions or comments on the strategic plan? Okay, let's move on. We're gonna move to the city attorney's office, and that would be Mr. Rudolph.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. At the last city council meeting, we discussed in some detail about the process whereby the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control reviews license applications for businesses in this community that want to sell alcoholic beverages. And state law requires that in circumstances where license, license applications want to be, want to locate in areas where there's an undue concentration, which means that there's a high ratio of businesses, or they're in a high crime area, that they are required to deny those licenses. But state law allows the city to determine that the public convenience or necessity warrants those businesses to be licensed and to locate within the community. And the city council can make that decision directly, or delegate it to a subordinate official. At the last city council meeting, the council expressed a desire to delegate that responsibility to the chief of police. So I'm back before you this evening with a proposed resolution that would, in fact, delegate that responsibility to the chief of police. What the resolution contains is, it contains eight criteria that the chief would review when looking at these license applications. Look at things like the availability or lack of alcohol sales in the surrounding area, the type of business that is proposing to sell alcoholic beverages, the proximity of the business to residential properties and other sensitive uses, such as schools, parks, Whether the business would increase the severity of existing law enforcement or public nuisance problems in the area. He would also get input from the Community Development Department to examine things like whether or not the business is consistent with the objectives, policies, land uses of the community. And basically, bottom line, whether or not the sale of alcoholic beverages would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. The chief would have a period of time, 10 days, to, to make his determination. If the licensed applicant was dissatisfied with that determination, he or she would have the ability to appeal that decision to the city council. This resolution also contains a provision that in circumstances where the chief believes that it would be more prudent for that application to come directly to the city council, that he can make a decision to refer directly to the city council without waiting for an appeal process to, to occur. If a matter is appealed to the, to the city council, the matter would be held at the next regular meeting of the city council after 15 days. So the 15-day minimum time period is to give the applicant and, and the city an opportunity to appropriately prepare for the appeal hearing. And then after the city council makes a determination, the notice would go to the applicant within seven days. If you add up that timeframe, roughly would take about 57 days to get through the full process, assuming that it took about 30 days to get to the next city council meeting. The city has up to 90 days to make a determination, so it's well within the timeframe established by state law. This resolution also contains an appeal fee of $250, which frankly is on the low side. If you go to our other appeal fees under the Community Development Department, the fee is about $730. But this is a little bit different process, and one of the things that we evaluate in setting appeal fees is, you, you don't want it to be a barrier to folks that have a legitimate concern from coming forward, but at the same time, you don't want it to be an automatic reaction by people. So $250 frankly represents about three to four hours of staff time collectively from the chief of police and drafting the staff report, input by myself and the city manager. So I think it's a, a reasonable number, but probably a little bit on the, the low side if we actually penciled out our actual costs. So that's the process that is contained in the resolution that's presented for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Question, comment from council? Ms. Campion?
Yeah, just a quick question. Under your Section 3 referral to the chief, the chief has the discretion not to, obviously as you stated, refer directly to the city council for action. But there's no timeframe. Am I to assume that that would be within the 10-day period upon which he is to act on the application?
That's correct. He'd have to, he'd have to act one way or another, or refer it within that 10-day period.
So he'd either have to approve it, deny it, or refer it within the 10-day period?
That's correct.
Okay. And the, the schedule of the appeal, I understand that the matter would not be heard less than 15 days on an appeal simply because of city council meeting schedules. But is there, there's no outside date by which time it would have to appear?
Well, what it says is that it would be scheduled at the next regular meeting, that is at least 15 days after.
It's automatically the next.
Right. Okay. That's all I have.
Any other councilmembers? About any public comment? Okay, I'm open for motions.
Move adoption.
Second?
Second.
Whatever you want to say, second.
I have one.
Oh, I, I seconded, then he said second, so whoever.
Oh, I thought you said you're looking for a second, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, 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 that's fine, Ms. Campion, that's fine. However you wanna do it, Ms. Cruz.
I already run up a.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. You can take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
You're not on.
Let's start with the councilmembers. Councilmembers Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Pass this unanimously, please.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Culture and Recreation Department. The, it's not Mr. Solis, because he's not here. So we have Monica again about the 19th Annual Strawberry Festival Fee Waiver Request.
Yes, the city received a letter from the Galt Chamber of Commerce requesting a fee waiver for the strawberry festival. The 19th Annual Strawberry Festival is estimated to be attended by 10,000 people from the general region. In past years, this event has had little to no security or traffic issues. In 2011, the city council approved a rental fee of $1,500 for this event to only cover the hard costs listed below. So the abatement cost and department overhead are not included. So that includes staff, paper products, trash, light and electricity, and then gas for the carts. Prior to 2011, the rental fee charged for the strawberry festival was set at $2,250 in 2010, $4,250 in 2008 and 2009, and it was $1,000 in 2007. The fiscal impact would be that staff has estimated $1,500 in revenue for the 2014 fiscal year budget for this event. Should council waiver adjust the rental fee from $1,500, then staff would need to make an adjustment to its revenue estimate to match the council's direction.
Okay. Any questions, comments by council? See nobody indicate? Oh, I'm sorry, you do. Okay. Ms. Campion?
Did anyone from?
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Ann Olrich is here from the strawberry.
I don't see any comments.
Well, she's just here to answer questions, if there's any questions from anybody. And I don't see any. So looking for, are you gonna say something, Ms. Campion? You look like you are, so.
I'm thinking, go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna ask for motions, so if you wanna speak something, let's ask.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm looking for motions on, for the strawberry festival waiver. Motion to approve?
Were you approving? That was my question.
Oh.
Because the recommendation doesn't have anything, and that was, I was hoping to hear maybe from Ann.
Liz?
I look at this, and we have a hard cost and a budget item of $1,500. You're asking for a reduction. Is the $1,500 acceptable? That's my, that's my question.
They're hoping to waive the fee completely. $1,500 is what they've paid in the last two years, and they'd like to waive that.
And that was my question, because there's nothing listed for 2012. Is that what was paid in?
2011 and 2012 were the $1,500. So it's sent to 2011, that's the fee.
$1,500.
Right.
Okay.
The answer's my question, yes?
Okay. Now?
Get me the review.
Yeah, go ahead.
Recommendation, review the Galt Chamber of Commerce letter and provide direction to staff regarding a rental fee waiver or reduction to the current fee charged for the use of the Galt Market Grounds and Veterans Field on May 17th and 18th, 2014, for the 19th Annual Strawberry Festival and future strawberry festivals.
I think what I'm hearing is two recommendations. Are these recommendations from staff, or just requests? And does staff have a, have a recommendation?
Staff would like direction from you, I believe. It currently is the $1,500 fee, and the strawberry festival is asking us for the fee to be waived. And we would like your direction on that, if it should be waived or not.
Yeah. The staff report outlines the city's costs, outlines the request from the Chamber of Commerce, and really a policy decision on the council as far as what the council would like to charge.
Sure, Michael?
No, it's not, of course. Can you say it?
Did you get?
2011 and 2012 were the $1,500, so it's sent to 2011 that's in the fee.
$1,500.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
The answer's my question, yes.
Okay. Now?
Get me a reading.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Um, recommendation, review the Galt Chamber of Commerce letter and provide direction to staff regarding a rental fee waiver or reduction to the current fee charged for the use of the Galt Market Ground and Veterans Field on May 17th and 18th, 2014, for the 19th Annual Strawberry Festival and future strawberry festivals.
I think what I'm hearing is two recommendations. Are these recommendations from staff or just requests? And does staff have a, have a recommendation?
Staff would like direction from you, I believe, that currently it's the $1,500 fee, and the strawberry festival, the city has asked for the fee to be waived, and we would like your direction on that, as to if it should be waived or not.
Yeah, the staff report outlines the city's costs, outlines the request from the Chamber of Commerce, and really a policy decision on the council as far as what the council would like to charge.
Sure, Michael?
No, it's not, of course, concealed.
Did you guys hear, hear me?
I did.
Yeah. Um, so, staff has outlined the, the costs of providing, uh, services for the strawberry festival. The Chamber of Commerce has provided a letter requesting that the city, uh, waive or reduce the costs, um, that the city has historically charged for the strawberry festival, and so, um, the recommendation is just for the council to review that information and then , uh, provide direction to staff. There is no recommendation of whether to waive it or not, it's really council's discretion, council's, uh, kind of policy on whether or not you wanna charge, uh, to recover the city's hard costs, or whether the council would like to consider, um, again, a waiver or reduction of the, those fees.
I'm just curious, what are, what are the abated costs and overhead costs that are not included? What does that amount to?
So, the, any Monica's time, or Armando's time, or any staff involved with coordinating the, uh, strawberry festival events, we don't have those calculated here, we've never, again, we've never charged for those in the past, it just, we just absorb them, 'cause they're not, they're not extra costs, they're not hard costs, they're just kind of the overhead of, of us doing those, providing those services.
And, I'd be.
Ms. Solish, yes.
Uh, yeah, I'm Anne Olrich, I'm in the past position of the chamber. Uh, the reason we were asking for the waivers, we feel like that, um, that the festival as a whole brings quite a bit of revenue into town. Um, I know most of the businesses, um, in and around, such as Save Mart and the Gap stations on it, they have to staff extra people because of the amount of people that we, that we draw in, we do, um, a lot of business with railies also during that time, so it's not just the immediate west side, we do both, um, you know, with all our businesses are affected by it, and I hope in a positive way, so that's why we're asking for that little fee to be waived.
And it's, it's good that the city and the chamber, it's not just the strawberry festival, it's chamber and the city working hand in hand to help one another. You need to have a strong chamber to have a strong city, and I think it's, uh, uh, good that we work so well with our chamber.
Well, and that's what the chamber's goal is, obviously, is to, um, help improve the local business economy, 'cause, you know, that's how we exist, and that's what we're here for.
Right. Ms. Payne, did you have something you were gonna say?
Oh, I was just going to ask the Chief of Police if, um, if we have to add, uh, extra police officers on during this time, or it says that there has not been any, um, violence or serious things happening in the past.
We haven't added anybody, but we do dedicate some people to be around the strawberry festival at the time, including walk-in grounds.
But not additional officers?
But not additional.
And all yours are paid for security, we have it on top of there. Okay.
Okay.
Sir, are you reading?
Mr. Cruz.
Why are you down here?
Mr. Cruz, yes.
Mr. Cruz was my father.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, given, given the fact, as, as you said, that the, the chamber does bring business into town, it is benefiting both chamber and the city, I would motion that we waive the fees.
I would second it.
Okay. And now a call for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Olrich. Okay, we're gonna adjourn the City Council meeting and convene to the Galt Successor Agency, and would you read roll call, please?
Board members, uh, Singleton?
Here.
Payne? Present. Campion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Do you have any public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
Uh, just the information, consent, you wanna read that, please?
Yes, we have two items tonight, approval of the minutes of the March, of the meeting of March 4th, 2014, and approval of the successor, Agent C Warren.
Move to accept.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Board members Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt, uh, City Council meeting. Uh, we're gonna go to the, well, the city clerk, you don't have a report now on that, I pulled that, but if you have something else.
I do have a few reminder.
Okay.
On April 7th, the Galt Youth Committee will meet at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. On April 9th, the Parks and Recreation Commission will meet at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. April 10th, the Planning Commission meeting will be held here in the council chambers at 6:30 PM. That takes us to our next City Council meeting, just a few, um, um, reminders on the extravaganza on April 12th, on Fourth Street between D and E Streets from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and also the shred-it event and the champs e-waste disposal event on April 26th at the Galt Market between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Squier. Uh, how about comments by staff? Mr. Bearman?
Yes, a few things, um, glad you introduced our newest staff member over here, Mr. Tony.
Sorry if I took your thunder.
Stewart, that's okay, it was good. Uh, we're really excited to have him here and glad he, uh, made the right decision to come up to Galt.
Yeah, oh, definitely he did, yes.
Yes, very good. And, uh, fortunately, Armando wasn't here this eve, this evening, wanted to officially, um, recognize him as the newest department head director for the City of Galt, as Parks and Recreation Director, so well-deserved promotion, and we're excited to welcome him, um, officially in that capacity. And, uh, one other item for, I think, the council and the community, the, the new City of Galt app was recently launched officially called Galt Connect. So, if you have a smartphone, or if you wanna go on the city's website, you can connect with the city, you can submit requests for street light out, or potholes, or, you know, some type of maintenance issue, whatever it might be that's on your mind, the way you wanna communicate with our wonderful city, you have an opportunity to do it now on the fly, on your mobile phone, you're out, you can snap a picture, it locates where you are, submits the information to staff, and we take care of it. Just in a couple days since its launch, we've already had several requests from members of the public, so we're excited to, to roll that out and, and get the, the, our, uh, our residents here using that service.
And it worked very well for me, 'cause I had actually, by chance, had a, a light out, street light out on my, my cul-de-sac, and then you told us about the app, I downloaded, it was fixed within two days. It worked very well.
All right.
Yeah, same, same with me, except today was, uh, and this happened, they repaired it over a month ago, but today I got an email saying it had been taken care of.
It was finished?
Yeah, so I don't know, it was gonna comment on that, but yeah, it worked.
It worked, they got it done.
Yeah.
I think, you know, staff's still learning the process of, of getting the information, we get it out there, and we need to make sure that it gets closed out once it's done. I think sometimes there's a lag because the, the streetlights are done by a contractor, and I think we only get reports from the contractor maybe once a month that say, here's the streetlights we fixed, and so that may be the lag time on that one. Mr. Winkler, do you wanna comment on that specifically?
Uh, that would be my guess, I would, I would have the opportunity to get familiar with that report back.
Yeah, I think that's what one of our staff members had told me before, so, but, uh, I think our staff is really good at responding, acknowledging, you get a, a kind of email acknowledging receipt of it, and then supposed to kinda keep you up to date through the process, so I'm excited to see what kinda responses we get from our community, so they can feel like they can, um, really, uh, report those things on a timely basis, and so, it's a good thing, so if you don't have the app, all these kids here.
Put it on there, man.
Go down your phone, Galt Connect. That's what they wanna do. Look it up.
And then like us on Facebook. Like us on Facebook and Twitter.
Yeah, you guys should know Facebook, you know. Was that it, Ms. Campion?
Facebook was last year, come on.
Oh, okay. Was that all you have?
Uh, I think so. Any other staff members have any other comments?
Got a couple of items.
Okay.
If you may, um, Vice Mayor and Council, um, we just this week are kicking off, weather permitting, our water meter, uh, field audits, uh, that will be going on citywide, uh, we'll be looking at both existing meter locations or in some vintage of relatively new subdivisions, uh, where there's just boxes but no meters yet, gonna be out finding those, taking pictures of those, getting meter serial numbers, and, and our due diligence to make sure that we've got service addresses lined up with actual meter installs, and, uh, be looking at that. We'll also be looking in the rest of town that do not have boxes or meters, uh, and looking to locate their existing service location where we can, and, uh, try to identify the optimal location for the new boxes that will need to go in, and this is preparatory for actually beginning meter installations. Uh, this audit should take us approximately a month, so we'll be touching virtually every property in town, at least residential property, and, uh, so if you see somebody working in your front yard, uh, or hear of that, uh, they should have, uh, some ID saying that they're a contractor for the City of Galt, and that should be on their vehicles as well. Uh, they'll be working within the city's right of way, but that may be in the frontage landscaped area of yards, and, uh, they may have to do some minor trimming or moving bark or whatever landscaping's there to try to find boxes that might have been overgrown and well.
Well, good, 'cause I need more bark in my garden, so.
Well, uh, they will be endeavoring to, uh, leave it, uh, in as good a shape as they found it, but they might have to, you know, be, get thorn bushes or something, do some trimming and, and digging and poking and prodding to find out.
Cool, but I won't have to do it, that's great.
Uh, second item is, uh, and that it may actually occur, uh, and you'll receive more information outside of council, uh, Twin Cities progress, obviously, we're seeing a little bit of a rain delay in the last few days, uh, but there's a lot of equipment poised and ready to go as soon as, uh, the wind and the sun give us a little bit of, uh, drying of the, the muddy conditions that exist, uh, so it'll probably be, uh, um, later this week before we see any more actual progress made, but we're getting ready, we're, uh, up until the delays, ever making good progress on, on the current closures and detours, and, uh, so, um, to follow, uh, that set of, uh, challenges with the next set, and, uh, the next phase will be the most challenging of the project, and that is, uh, probably within the next two weeks, uh, we'll be doing press releases and communicating, uh, in a variety of ways, including the city's website, uh, with the public, is we'll be starting the actual closure of Twin Cities Road between the roundabouts, including the overpass, so we're gonna eliminate the only northerly east-west connector across Highway 99. That's gonna create additional challenges with detouring traffic, the primary detour route will be south to Amador Crossing, um, and depending on whether you're going south to go north, you'll get on Walnut or continue south, uh, to Amador to get to the west side of town, and vice versa, if you're on the west side trying to get east throughout the detour south and, uh, use Amador and Carroll to get back on either 99 or continue on Walnut, uh, on the existing detour. So, there'll be additional message boards and signs of detours posted, and we'll get you heads up, but right now, we're about two weeks away from that next big step if weather, uh, continues, uh, to hold for us, and, uh, that'll be sort of the last big set of disruptions, um, uh, to get this job done, uh, hopefully, uh, by the end of May is our target, you know, with weather permitting, knock on Farmica here. Uh, then there'll be one last closure piece, and that'll be the west leg of Twin Cities Road on the west side, uh, to make the tie-ins with the existing, uh, alignment there, but that'll be a, a, about a one-week closure and be able to, feel quicker to get done. So, the next one ahead of us will be the challenging one, so we ask for the community's patience, and we'll try to be clear with our signage and communications, and we'll get that done as quick as the weather allows us to get it done. Do you have a timeline as far as, would you estimate? Yes, uh, we expect that that closure may last up to four weeks, uh, we'll get it done quicker if we can, but, uh, that involves major grade changes and tie-ins to the finishing both roundabouts, uh, and then tying into the bridge structure on the overpass, so got a little bit of work to do there.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler, any other comments, questions?
I do.
Mr.?
On Saturday morning, uh, we gave a physical agility test, and for the people who were successful, they took a written examination for the position of police officer. Uh, we had roughly 150 people apply, we, uh, took 98 and invited them to take the test with us, and appeared to be some very good candidates. Uh, we won't know what the score is on the written examination until probably, uh, Thursday of this week, we'll get notice from Post, Police Officer Standards and Training Sacramento, and, uh, we'll get that done, and I'm happy to announce that we got a verbal acceptance of an offer for a dispatcher. Um, this young lady just finished her testing, completed it, I talked with her today, and she's accepting the job, she should be starting with us in two weeks.
Awesome, thank, thank you, Chief. Okay, any comments, questions by council? Ms. Payne?
Yes. Um, the Shop Local Committee has their own website now, and it's galshoplocal.com, and we're inviting, uh, businesses to advertise on there, if they wanna put coupons or whatever for discounts, uh, we can accommodate that as well. Also, I wanna make a correction, I said the storefront art reception was gonna be on the 12th, that would, uh, be extravaganza on the 12th, and the reception is on the 11th, and at the extravaganza, our Galt Youth Committee will be making pancakes for breakfast at the Estrelita Ballroom. It was incorrectly, uh, published in the Lodi paper that it's at the Grange, but it will be at the Estrelita Ballroom with our young chefs cooking, so everybody plan to eat breakfast there. And, uh, I think now, are you guys surveying like from 8:00 to 10:00? I believe that's correct. Shake your head. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, we know that, you gotta get ready to cook.
The Galt Community Alliance will be meeting at the Parks and Rec Building on April the 14th at 6:00. That's it.
Hmm, as council members?
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna put these guys on the hot seat out here since you're left. I wanna recognize Liberty High School, uh, what is the name of your class, please? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. What, government?
Government.
It's government class?
Thank you, government.
Now, I always like to recognize you guys, and I know it's part of your assignment, but we appreciate you being here, and I know sometimes it can get boring, but it really is interesting stuff if you really look into it, stuff we have to know, so I appreciate you being here, so thank you. And, uh, that's all I have, if somebody has anything else, and we will adjourn at 8:26. Good night.